Tonight is Mr. Nick Bracy's last official meeting with us. He is moving to the great metropolis of Washington DC, I believe. But we appreciate him keeping our cabinets going and doing the work that he does. We just appreciate you and being a friend as well as an employee here. Thank you, Mr. Nick. Anybody else have a comment for Nick?
I will miss him.
I will, thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
All right, Mr. Millstead?
I got him now for the end.
Okay, well, good then. All right, moving along then. Adoption of the agenda as printed. Y'all have a chance to review this?
If nothing from the public, then will we approve it as printed?
Okay. Motion by Opa- Anders, second by Lisa Best. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries. Approval of the minutes from the regulation session of June 4th. Any additions or corrections, say clerical. Motion by Linda Henderson, second by David Gillett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries. All right, moving into reports. Dr. Lewis?
All right. For the July personnel report, I'd like to report two staff retirements, 12 faculty resignations, 10 points of reference, three faculty and staff recommendations, one bus operator resignation, one food service recommendation, one food service point of reference, and one custodian maintenance recommendation.
Okay, you've heard this report. We appreciate this information, and I know you're fixing to get really busy gearing up for the next two years coming up. Your job's way ahead of everybody else's, but we appreciate you. Mr. Millstead has a comment. Oh, no, excuse me, George Murphy has a comment.
I'd like to introduce Ms. Juanita Duke. She is going to be the new CFO of the Lincoln Parish School Board, and obviously a lot easier on the eyes than I am. She's going to do a great job, make a great employee.
All right. Welcome back. Welcome back. What year did you work here?
1998, 1999.
Okay. She did a fantastic job then, so we look forward to working with her again, and we hate seeing Mr. Murphy go.
Some people do, some people don't.
But we appreciate y'all and welcome.
It's always a pleasure to steal somebody back from Washington Parish. It's hard for us. My two sons were at Ruston High when I was there, and they're great students. Looking forward to working with Ms. Duke in the future.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, moving into your financial reports.
Yes, sir. The first one's a sales tax report, and this was the first month of the fiscal year where it actually improved compared to this month last year. So that was good, maybe we're heading in the right direction, but year-to-date, we're still down 1.7 million for the fiscal year. And then as far as recoveries through audits, we're also down there. Moving on to the financial update for the month of May. Comparing the total fund balances to last year at this time, we're down 4.7 million, and compared to April of 2019, we're down 5.9 million. And then some good news on the healthcare fund. For the month, we're up 206,000, and year-to-date, we're up 70,000. So we're back in the white there. And we also have some more information that Mr. Millstead is going to share with you on that later on in his report.
Okay.
I'll try to answer any questions anybody has about those reports.
Any questions with Mr. Murphy?
I have a statement. Thank you very much for clearing that box line.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for letting me know about it.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Sorry.
We appreciate those reports. Construction update. Mr. Payton's here, if there is.
Yep. Okay. All right, Ryan, where do we want to start? All right, Ruston High School. Well, there's a whole lot going on right now, and what I'm really concentrating on is the tornado damage at Ruston High School. I'm working with, basically with the stadium, the athletic complex, the big walls, or two poles down, and the press box. And we're working with two engineers and our architect just as hard as we can, trying to get, hopefully, get this complex ready for some football games, maybe in October. And you notice I said maybe. I'm not telling the board, the people in this room, that we're going to be playing football. Everything goes just right, just as planned. It may happen. We may be able to play a few October games, and maybe a playoff game in November. So that's kind of where we are. The press box bids will open next week, on July the 16th. They've got 60 days to complete the project. So you can kind of figure and see where the dates are there. The poles, we didn't think at the time, at the beginning, that we would have to bid the replacement of the poles. There's six total poles there. Two of them are down, and this one is condemned. As you can see in the picture, the engineer, structural engineer, we hired a 10 and 1/2 degree list east, and that's unacceptable. You can, if you walk around over there and look at it enough, you can sight it and see it. Of course, they did that with instance there. So that pole's going to have to come down. And basically, what it announced too is the replacement of three poles, and just in a minute, we'll see a picture of a pedestal. Going to go to the next one, a base. Okay, those are the bases that those poles are sitting on. And on the recommendation of our engineer, structural engineer, we hired him to do a visual inspection. He looked at them, looked at the three on the west side, and they appeared to be okay, the three remaining. Of course, he found the one that was leaning on the east side. He suggested we do some further testing. So we hired a company out of Houston to come up here and do some laboratory testing. And you see what we found. One of the bases, that's some die they put in. They had equipment that they could shoot all the way through that concrete. And that base is cracked. Those are not just surface fissure cracks. It is cracked all the way through to the anchor bolts. It would have been a disaster if we would have put a 100-foot pole on top of that base, because it could have very easily come back, right back down again. So that's kind of where we are with that. So this base, you can't get that thing out of the ground. It's 20 feet in the ground. We just cut the top of it off, move over, drill a new hole, hit it full of concrete, and go again. And our structural engineers say they can make the adjustments in three feet. It's not going to affect the lighting on the field. Okay, what's next, Ryan? Okay, we had the wells checked. That's on the west side over there, with wells around the bases. So the remaining poles, we had those checked. And they could shoot through there to see if there were any cracks, and they're okay. So we're in good shape as far as the west side of the state of our pole. All right, we had a lot of debris from the press box. It landed kind of 100 yards from where it originally was into the Greenwood Cemetery. Those poles fell into the cemetery, and I talked to the superintendent, and we thought we had kind of a moral obligation to them. The damage that we did, and there were nine grave sites out there that we damaged. Fortunately, eight of them, we didn't crack any of the monuments and install them. They're just glued down with marine cement on those bases, and the debris knocked them off. So we've got a local vendor there with a very nominal fee, and he's already fixed all of them. There's one stone that we cracked, and it's already ordered from a quarry in Georgia, Grand Quarry. And when we get it in, we'll get him to replace it. There are grave markers and tombstones all over that cemetery that are down. You know, we didn't have anything to do with it. Flying debris, and limbs and trees and things have knocked down. But anyway, we got our part fixed. Okay, also going on at the Ruston High Complex is the resurfacing of the track. There's kind of a long story. I'll make it very short. The track is out of warranty, has a five-year warranty, and warranty expires next month. And we had some issues with it. We had some holes in the track. And then there was some damage that was done possibly on our part, mishy, kind of misuse of the track. So the company didn't want to cover that part of it, so we worked with Coach Ball and worked out a compromise with them, and they gave us a 25% discount, which amounted to about $50,000, to resurface the entire track. And they are doing that right now as we speak. That's the asphalt base of the track that you're looking at. And there's a rubber layer that goes on top of it, and they're over there right now, probably as we are sitting in this meeting, putting the new surface on it. And it'll be black in color, and they have white stripes on it. And it'll have a brand-new five-year warranty. And some of the areas that were damaged, where people crossed the track, and I talked to Coach Ball today, he's going to order some canvas tarp that are made for that track to lay down there. There's no trip hazard associated with them, so that when there are high areas of traffic on that track, it'll be protected. We won't have this issue in the future. Okay? All right, the STEM building. STEM building is well on its way. July the 19th is the deadline, the end of the contract, and it looks like they're going to make it. Since the last board meeting, the parking lot, it's not striped, but the parking lot is complete. That gular that you see there is gas line, and the gas line runs on the south side of the building. It's not in yet, but things are moving along. Go ahead to another one. All right, they're doing the vinyl grading on the campus part. There'll be sod around the building for about 50 feet, and then the rest of the campus will be hydro bogs. That's kind of a nick that's put down, and seed and fertilizer, so the grass will grow. So they're out there in those boxes that you see. That's part of the drainage, the catch bases, part of the drainage system, okay? Inside, that ground that you see is brown paper. Underneath that is carpet, and it's complete. Along the edges are LBT, luxury vinyl tile, and all the floors are complete on the inside. They're doing some cleaning. They're installing cabinets and refinishing, or putting finish on the cabinets now. So they're getting real close to being finished. Okay? Now, this was something we thought was going to really hang us up. The front, this is the front entrance of the building, looking from the inside out. And that's called for bullet-resistant glass, and it had to be special ordered. And it was supposed to arrive on the 19th of July, the day of the end of the contract. But it came in this week, and they've already, that part of the structure there is called transom, and they've already installed the glass. They're finished. It's one inch thick. I saw it. Takes two people to pick up a piece of it, it's so heavy. And the door, where that man is standing in the building there, where the doors are double-gone, doors will be here tomorrow. And of course, they have the bullet-resistant glass in it. That temporary wall that you see behind there, all that'll go. That's just temporary. Okay? There you go. One other thing we didn't have pictures of, each board meeting, I usually say something about the Carline Road in Chuban. I talked to the parish engineer.
This is nursing equipment that's no longer needed, and we're asking the board to clear it surplus, and then we'll dispose of it in accordance with the state law.
You prefer this recommendation, recommendation to dispose of this nursing equipment at Ruston High School? Any questions from Mr. Murphy on this item?
They'll work out the recommendation.
Mike Barmore, who's a Danny, did you have a question? Or you, second, okay, second by Danny Hancock. All those in favor say aye. Any opposition, motion carries. Policy manual revision. Ms. Bastian?
Yes, sir. Board, you're being given two policy revisions tonight to study for next month. They are on annual leave, which is just a change in our disbursement date that we do every year, and the others on immunizations. If you have questions, please just give me a call before the next board meeting.
All right, please do your homework on these items, and like I said, if you have any questions, contact Ms. Bastian. Salary schedules. George Murphy?
Yes, sir. First of all, we need to give credit to who did all this work, and that's Ms. Julie Stevenson. Like, she's over there. Hard worker. When I came to work Monday morning, I had an email that was dated 11:24 PM on Sunday night, and I'm like, wait a minute, I was way as good. Anyway, she worked hard on this thing, and what, the reason that we had to do this is because the state gave all the certificated workers $1,000 raise, and the support workers $500 raise. So it was time. The last time that we did it was in 2014, and so at the time of putting in that change, she also took our salary schedule from two down to one. It's a lot easier to read, a lot easier to keep up with. So we'll try to answer any questions you have, and we recommend that you approve this salary schedule.
I assume everybody had a chance to download these schedules and look at them and try to figure them out. All right, any questions, Mr. Murphy, on these salary schedules? Question from the public?
I'm going to approve this.
Motion by David Gillett to approve these salary schedules. I was talking about Debbie Abrams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Murphy and Ms. Stevenson. Permission to accept bids for the Schuylkill Pre-K Project. Mr. Payton?
Okay. As your background indicates, we opened the bids for the Pre-K Elementary at Schuylkill Elementary on June 27th. We had six qualified bidders, and after reviewing the bids, my recommendation, or our recommendation from the board, is to accept the lowest qualified bid from the district construction of $1,195,000 and award them as the contractor for the project.
Did this come in within?
Within $95,000.
Okay.
And we have used this contractor before, Vista, and had good luck with it.
All right. All right, questions on this, on the acceptance of the Pre-K project at Schuylkill? Mr. Hancock, if you will?
I know that we accept that.
Okay. Motion by Danny, Mr. Bill?
Will any of the insurance money from the old Lincoln Elementary School be used in this project?
Yeah, I mean, it's, the whole thing.
It's what we're using, all of it.
The 4.1 million.
The whole million plus will be?
There's two other projects coming after this one. One is at Ruston High, and the other one is safety for the whole district.
Are you saying, then, that the 4 million plus is spent up with the next two projects?
Well, the first project's being bid out, and we're asking the board to accept the bids, but then the other two are coming right behind it, and they'll come to the board before we do anything.
Right, but are you suggesting that the amount of insurance money will be used up after the next two projects, if they are successful?
Yes, sir.
All right, that was my question. Thank you.
All right, we had a second by Opa- Anders. Any further questions, board members? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Let's see. All right, Mr. Murphy again?
Okay, this is required once a year by the legislative auditors, and it's the System Survey and Compliance Questionnaire, and we ask that you approve it.
Okay, this is, this is something we have to, look at George's handwritten messages every year, once a year. We appreciate that. Any questions on this item? It's directly just an information file.
Yeah, it's required.
Required. All right, any questions? We have a motion to approve this, Lisa Best, second by Ms. Linda Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. All right. Cooperative endeavor agreement with the town of Duba regarding the old baseball field. Mr. Millstead?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. The effort at school since 2015, one of the efforts has been to dispose of properties that we no longer use, and kind of a history of that at, in Duba in particular. Several years ago, property that the fire station sits on was donated to them, and then the Highcoe School property was given, or donated to Baptist Church in exchange for our loss of liability. So that's been good for us, and so this is the third piece of that. Mr. Barmore and I have talked, we've talked to the mayor of Duba, city council members, and so our recommendation is that the old baseball field, which is not even, which doesn't join the present school property, I remember actually playing that field as a teenager, and I'm old. So that field's been there a long time, but we haven't used it. I don't know how many years it's been since the school has even used that piece of property up there. So in lieu of us incurring continued liability with that, our recommendation is that in return for giving them the property, they assume the liability for the property.
Okay. Any questions on this item? Question from the public? Board members? All right, you heard the recommendation that we donate this property to the town of Duba. Danny Hancock first, Mike Barmore second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposition, motion carries. Thank you much. All right, Mr. Millstead?
Yes, sir. Several items to, just give you information or updates on. One of the items, of course, in your portfolio, I think you had a nepotism disclosure form. I'm pretty sure that it does not apply to everybody, maybe a couple of y'all, but it does apply to you and, of course, principal department. You can get that for her tonight, or just for her, do you have a deadline on that?
But it isn't important, you get it done if you serve the block.
Yeah, it is, because we've had a board member previously, part of my time, that was, there was some fine involved, it seemed like, to put that. We're continuing to work with the city of Ruston relative to the Ruston High Baseball Complex. I met with their attorney and our attorney last Monday. We still are not to where we need to be on that, and I'll give you information as it comes to vote to us. So everybody's got their own interest, frankly, and we, of course, are saying that we have traditionally used the field, and the city says we're not willing to give us, at this point, exclusive use of the field during baseball season. But I think we're going to get there. So there was some movement, I think, by the city recently, and so it's Ruston High Baseball. And so we need to be able to use it and have exclusive right to it whenever we, right to say who else is going to play on it. So we're working on that, and hopefully we'll get something done in the next couple of months, is the goal. But I've had that goal for a year now, so we'll see how they work. We're going to keep working on that, so. Staff reduction, of course, I've pushed to you that in order to get our budget in line, we would try to reduce personnel in the district. We've been able to do that. To this point, we've reduced our personnel by 20, certificated people, individuals, and then 33, I believe, non-certificated. So we're standing at 53 fewer employees. And of course, we did a lot of that, trying to stay out of classroom. So that was the goal, to, we had to reduce to get within budget constraints, but at the same time, we didn't want to hurt ourselves in the classroom. So I think we've been successful with that, and we'll have more information forthcoming about that, about the actual savings to the schools. The last two years, we've run a deficit budget of about $2 million, Mr. Murphy involved probably.
And it could be more because of sales tax, maybe.
That's correct. So we'll keep working at that, and hopefully things get turned around here. I think the construction associated with tornado may actually end up being a positive for us in some ways, but still, there are some businesses that are not open, and so they're not taking in dollars, and they're not charging sales tax. So whenever we get up and running 100%, I feel very good about where we would be as a school board related to the incoming dollars and the sales tax. This year, as we normally have, we have a beginning-of-school convocation, and some of you are very good to come to that, and I really appreciate that. It's always at a time that some of you can't come, I realize that. But this year, we're doing it on two different dates.
I wanted to ask a question about the, yes. The 50-plus, is that from retirements, firings, layoffs, people that quit?
Retrition, yeah. Just people that were not coming back.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. So the beginning of school, of course, we're starting earlier this year, but the convocation where we meet at Ruston High every year, that will be Monday, August the 12th. And that will be the normal thing that we used to do, where we introduce principals and introduce new folks. But then on Tuesday, the 13th, we'll be moving over to Howard Auditorium at Louisiana Tech for an all-day in-service on school safety. And so we're very, we want our teachers to be very considerate of school safety. Armored One out of Syracuse, New York, which has studied 50 school shootings over the past X number of years, they will be there to give us information about how we can react or should react in case those things happen. And then the afternoon of the 13th, one of the Sandy Hook teachers, of course, Sandy Hook was the famous school shooting up in Connecticut, one of those teachers who was there that day saved her entire class when we did the presentation in the afternoon. So I encourage you to come to that if you can. I think it will be very informative, something that we can learn from as a district. It's not an easy presentation to sit through, as she recounts the disastrous day in which over 20 children were executed by somebody out of their mind. And so to hear her talk about that and the passion with which she will present, hopefully will help our teachers have a clearer understanding of what you're up against and the short time you have to react in a city like ours, where you don't expect that to happen. I mean, she'll tell us, that's the last place they ever expected anything like that. So we need to hear that, because we live in one of those towns where we could say, that's Ruston, the last place. Salesboro shooter is the last place, Duba, last place, but nobody's immune. And so we need to learn as much as we can and be cognizant of issues that people have, issues that are bigger than the person, and they come in not having their own issues and take it out on them. That's a tragedy that we need to be aware of, could happen to us at any time. So looking forward to that presentation. Yesterday, we held a meeting with some retirees related to school insurance and our health plan. Our health plan, as you noted, in being here for some of many years, over the last several years, we've shown an decline, not in income, but we've, the gap between what we take in and what is charged has narrowed to the point where the time is coming, just to pay for retiree insurance in the next 20 years, just retirees, and the bills associated with that, will be more than all of our health plan pays for now. Right now, we pay about $10 million a year. About 23.7, that's estimated to be 15 million, just for the retirees. And so that's very conservative numbers. So the fact is, we can't sit and do nothing about it. And so we have engaged, we had, the humanity came in a couple of years ago, and we met with retirees over Ruston High in June of 2017, I would say. The meeting did not go well. We didn't, I'll take full responsibility for that, maybe we didn't present clearly the amount of people, talked way over folks' head, and it caused confusion. And so we kept working, and we asked our own carrier, Blue Cross, if they would come up with a plan, and so they've done that. And so Blue Cross was here yesterday, their representatives, to talk about and give us information about how we can make this better work for our employees. So the plan that they're proposing, just to give you a brief synopsis of it, Mr. Murphy and I will give it more detail when at the next board meeting, because before we vote or anything, obviously you as a board member are making the decision, or I have to know automatically. But the plan basically saves us anywhere from $800,000 to $1 million per year. It increases really the coverage for the retirees. They're out of pocket, will go from $5,000 to $1,000. And so we save money, employees are better off. And then, of course, as a district, we see this having us prolong our relationship with Blue Cross, but also to keep this plan. This plan is a great drawing card for the Lincoln Parish School Board. You can go south to Jackson Parish, or any parish around us, it's an office of group benefits, the normal health insurance plan that a lot of districts use. A monthly premium could be $650. And then we look at ours, and we make a plan about our $200, or whatever, that some of us are having to pay. And so we feel like this will perpetuate the plan that we have and make it viable for us, so that retirees who presently pay a $0 premium every month, their spouses pay some, and so we want that to continue. It has a great drawing card. When a teacher comes to us, we remind them, you may go to another parish and make more money, but look at the difference between what you're going to pay for insurance in Washington Parish as an example, as compared to Lincoln Parish, or being Bull, or Jackson. So it helps us recruit some people. So we want to make sure that we have And so we feel like this will perpetuate the plan that we have and make it viable for us so that retirees who presently pay a zero-dollar premium every month, their spouses pay some. And so we want that to continue. It's a great drawing card. When a teacher comes to us, we remind them, hey, you may go to another parish and make more money, but look at the difference between what you're gonna pay for insurance in, uh, Washaw Parish is an example as compared to Lincoln Parish or Ben Boil or Jackson. So it helps us recruit some people. So we wanna make sure that we have the best policy for our retirees. And we want them to be in a comfort zone about it. So the meeting yesterday, we brought in sixty-seven folks and Blue Cross explained the plan. I think it's got possibilities for us. Uh, Dr. Glad was part of that. And Dr. Glad, you won't say anything about my team after that, so.
I'd like to make a few comments. Nobody hates change more than I do. I've hated it since I was forty. And that was several decades ago, as you know. But after listening to the presentation, and there were as many people as you see board members over there that came up, and we spent two hours. And I wanna personally thank Mr. Murphy because I submitted thirty-three questions on my own. And he answered every one of them. Or made it a, oh, no. He answered every one of them and we had a very frank discussion. And, uh, if the policy as it's being formulated continues as what we were told, it just appears to me that it would be a win-win for the retirees as well as it would be a win for, uh, the school board and helping to save some money with renegotiated drug prices, renegotiated hospital, uh, amounts, uh, and so forth. So I left with a very positive feeling. I came in not knowing what to expect, but I was pleasantly surprised.
So we'll take that, this brief introduction we've given you, at the next board meeting, we'll give you more. We'll give you the handout that the committee received and let you ask any questions about it. And then what I like to do, uh, possibly, uh, September, no later than October, is that we vote. But, uh, I committed to the retirement that we would, I would go face-to-face with them at Ruston High before we did anything, and we're gonna do that. And so, uh, that's my obligation. And we brought the committee in frankly to listen to their questions, some of the most vocal people at our last meeting. And they were, it was a very frank, honest conversation. And so I, this is gonna turn out a very positive for the district. So keep that in mind over the next month as we anticipate presenting that plan to you.
What day did you have it on?
I'm sorry?
Yesterday, yesterday, okay. Well, the phone hasn't started ringing yet, so.
No, no, it did. Uh, I do wanna mention how about, uh, Nick Bracy, just a man, uh, Nick's leaving us, of course, he's been with us. How long, Nick, have you been with us here?
Would've been three years, about a May to August.
Yeah. And, and you know, IT people are invaluable because these little things right here just don't operate because I turned my notes up there. Uh, he's had to help the, uh, obviously he's helped all of you, but that's just one small part of what he does. And he's in schools consistently, he's making sure that all the stuff that's running at our schools, along with Ryan and Seth. And of course, uh, Nick's wife, uh, got a job in Washington DC area that he really can't talk, tell, talk about a whole lot because of what it involves. So congratulations to you and your family. I think that's a very positive move for, uh, for you. And we'll, we will miss you, uh, as an individual here. You've done a super job for us. And so when somebody steps away from a job like that, we congratulate them, but, uh, it is painful for us. Uh, in his place, we'll be moving Mr. Ryan Williams. Ryan, Ryan, of course, is here tonight. Ryan, thank you for taking that home. Uh, he's also an IT person and does a super job for us. Ryan goes back to Ruston High days, as I recall, graduated back in two thousand, somewhere around there.
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three. Uh, so I was just there my first year, remember Ryan, but he's a great asset for us as well. And we'll be hiring somebody in Nick's place. Uh, Nick has also began working with me relating to a security team that I've found to fit together for the district. And his input on that has been very valuable for me personally. So Nick, we will miss you and Ryan, we're gonna work with you in this part. We've been working together for several years now. Uh, thank y'all for what you did. And I believe that's all I have, Mr. President.
And the deadline on that disclosure, it was thirty days after school starts, and it'll be seventy percent.
I'd like to ask a question that has nothing to do with any of that. And it's real simple. Will Ruston High School be playing football on its campus this year?
Uh, we, we hope that's the case. We can't promise that. And it's better if we do because, uh, we make, frankly, we make more money at Ruston High than playing it over to Tech. But Tech has graciously allowed us to play all of our home games over there. Obviously, our purpose is to be ready by October. The, uh, Mr. Peyton, our, our best-case scenario, first game in October?
Maybe.
But maybe none.
What, Mike, really? Trip us up on those poles?
Yeah.
And we opened the bids on the sixth. And we don't know if a contractor has those poles in stock. He's gonna have to order them. But if we can get them pretty quick, we're gonna make it.
Thank you. I'm asking board members?
Oh, I have a former student here from the Western University. I would like for him to introduce himself and tell us what he's doing.
Uh, I'm Chad Wages. My wife's a teacher. Mr. Mills, that was my assistant principal when I was in first grade, so that's how old he is. And Mr. Anders was my prince, vice-principal for first grade through eleventh grade at Weston. And we spoke, we thought really highly of him, so he had, he came and spoke at my senior graduation in two thousand. And, uh, my son had a, a tender for me for his boy scout, so he's in eighth grade now at the junior high, so.
Boy scout?
Oh, people are, young men are always welcome.
All right, do you have any questions for us?
Oh, no, sir.
Ms. Lisa?
I make the motion to adjourn.